At this time, I'd ask everyone to please rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
President.
Here.
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 Also with us, Jane McCarthy, our municipal clerk, Borough Attorney Dawn Sullivan. We also have Sherri Gallagher, our treasurer, Andy Pascal, our auditor at the end, he's getting lost down there. Hi, Andy. Thank you for being here. And Brianna Calabro, who is our assistant to our tax assessor and also our clerk in training, joining us for the budget process this evening. So, welcome, everyone, this evening. This is an official meeting of the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale on December 28, 2016. The date time, place of this official meeting was faxed and mailed to all local news media posted here at Borough Hall. There is no early executive session. There is one non-agenda item, and that non-agenda item pertains to increasing our public defender's annual salary by $1,000. Just for some background, in case the public has questions, the public defender's salary is paid for out of a trust based on the fees we collect when the public defender is assigned to an individual. That trust fund exceeded a certain allowable amount per the state's rules, and the state sent us a letter and said, "Hey, you either have to use this for public defender salary or we're going to take it from you." So, we are increasing, and Sherri, if you help me, what is he paid now? $5,000. So, we'll be increasing at the $6,000 to keep us under the maximum allowable going forward, otherwise the state will take it. So, that is on tonight for approval, public defender salary up $1,000. It's the only non-agenda item. Continuing, I need a motion for early public comment.
So moved.
Second. Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item, please come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Linda Huntley, 86 Van Dam Avenue. On the bills list, there's a couple of questions I have.
Sure.
On page 22, there's two items. There's inbound asphalt for Anderson Field. Why are we paying for something on Anderson Field?
I'm sorry, where are you?
Page 22.
22.
Top one.
Inbound asphalt for Anderson's Field. Open space. Actually, this, I don't know if it's titled properly, because this was, we allowed Mike Fitzpatrick to utilize, Salvation Army, Anderson Field as a staging area for the paving of Star Lake Road. So, this should have been all part of that. Do you know why it's specifically saying Anderson Field?
Probably won't from there. Probably just...
Oh, no, no, okay. No, right, right, right. This is actually removing asphalt that was in the parking lot. This is not the new paving. The new paving was, was no expense to the borough for that. That was done by the contractor for allowing to use staging area. This is hauling asphalt that was stored from the water project. We just got to check why it's coming from Rose Fund versus Star Lake, so we'll look at that. But this is hauling asphalt out of there, not the new paving. I'll double-check with Sherri tomorrow about the account.
Okay.
Yeah. That was removing, was that the vendor?
Yes, $798.
Tealcon. That was bringing it, our guys brought it there. So, I'll double-check the account, but that's what that was related to.
On the same page, you have supplies for gazebo, supplies for, I'm assuming, I don't know, sun pump, but it's coming out of the dog fees and euthanasia donations fund?
Right. We, the National Honor Society of Butler High School has raised over $5,000, which was donated into the animal trust fund. So, any fees related to, they raised the money to do the gazebo for when we adopt families as a sitting area, and a lot of landscaping that they're going to do on April 29. So, that was totally offset by fundraised money.
Okay, so that's being done at the animal shelter.
Correct. It's already installed. Our DPW built it and paid for by the Honor Society. Matter of fact, on May 16, we'll bring them in here to honor and thank them for their service, and on April 29, they're doing the landscaping donation.
And on page 24, the second item, it's for Sloan Park, $4,000 coming out of other professional fees and services?
Again, Sloan Park is finally going out to bid. Bid opening is May 11. Again, coming out of this, I can only imagine that we have spent close to $200,000 in miscellaneous fees on the Sloan Park project. I guess Ms. Huntley's question is, it's coming out of other professional fees and services? Just to place...
Don LaFousky.
Don LaFousky. We've, I think we've...
Sloan Park?
Did we use all the money that we had gotten for Sloan Park?
No. Miscellaneous engineering.
Nothing.
There's $600-plus thousand in it for the project, but we have spent close to $200,000 in engineering just getting the permit, and no one expected a five-year haul on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports, Jane, do you have anything for us?
Nothing at this time.
Dawn?
Nothing this evening, mister.
Bree, to put you on the spot, kidding. Any council member? We're good?
April 29 is paper shredding, correct?
Correct. Yes.
9/12.
9/11?
9/11.
I believe it is. It goes fast. That's, the truck fills, so we shorten the hours, because we had unhappy people who came late last year.
The, the...
Garden?
Opening of the garden is this Saturday, 12 o'clock. I just need to stress again how much our DPW has been a tremendous help the last few days, helping out with some projects there and kind of wrapping things up and getting everything ready. We're pretty much ready to go, I think.
Looks absolutely fabulous. Dawn?
After today, like phenomenal.
Yeah. I just added that to the alert on the website.
I'm sorry?
I just added that to the website, so people's...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. So, yeah, I really encourage everybody to go. All the council should be, you know, driving by and looking at it, and go up into it. You have to go up into it now. And we got a compost bin donated today.
Nice.
So, that was really nice. So, it's, everybody's been wonderful.
Excellent, excellent. Any other council person have anything? Just a couple of things, as REBAV has begun. Remember, last meeting, we spoke about, we had Jack Miller here, resident concerned about notice. The notice, that was quickly done. There is going to be formal written notification when they get into doing the water mains and more of a disruptive nature of work. That was the miscommunication that I had from pre-construction meeting, that that's forthcoming, because what they're doing now is simple, you know, lateral work and not the main ripping of the road. So, that's what formal notification will begin. As I stated a moment ago, the bid opening will be May 11, so I hope at our, not hope, assuming the bids are all within reason, that on May 16, we will be awarding the Sloan Park flood mitigation project after six long years of getting an approval on that. So, looking very much forward to that. Our trial contest two weeks ago was a great success. Thanks to DPW help, and thanks for, Ray, for being there. Had over 100 participants. It was a real, real great, successful day. Little League opening day was this past weekend. I was out of town, but the photos that Dawn posted on Facebook looked like a great day. And ex-chief, police chief Fletcher was the grand marshal, so it looked like a lot of fun.
He was thrilled.
Yeah.
He was thrilled.
That's a great idea, great idea. So, things are moving along, so thank you, everyone. I need a motion now for approval of the consent agenda. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second. Any comment? I'd just like to thank Paul Lemond, who served on our Economic Development Committee, who is moved and needed to resign from the economic development, so I thank him for his service. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First item is, I need a motion for resolution 2017, I'm sorry, we just did it.
Well, you did it.
Yeah. 2017, 4.11. It's a resolution for dedication by rider for affordable housing trust fund. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second. Simply, any discussion? This is setting up a dedication by rider for the $100,000 Avalon Bay Trust Fund, the donation from Avalon Bay to establish affordable housing trust fund, which we are now starting the program to implement home improvements for those who are eligible. Any further comment? Roll call, please.
Costas.
Yes.
Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Yes.
Sandemar.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes. Item B, this is our second and final reading, public hearing notice on ordinance 9, 2017, establishing a cap bank. Can I have the public notice statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance was posted in the municipal bill published in the Arrow News. How does the Arrow News have a motion that he may get at a verified time?
And who makes that motion, please?
Sumit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Calendar year 2017, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to 9, 2017? Seeing no one, motion to close.
Sumit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item C is the public hearing.
To have adoption?
I'm sorry?
2017.
I'm sorry, that was for closing. Motion, who moves to adopt the cap?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council members DeLawipra.
Yes.
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 Costas.
Yes. Okay, item C is public hearing on our 2017 municipal budget and adoption thereof. Do you want to begin with that?
Sure. Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the time to give to the public hearing of the municipal budget and tax resolution for 2017. The budget was approved by the governing body on March 21, 2017, as advertised as required by law on March 27, 2017, together with notice of hearing for this time. Mayor, I have a resolution regarding the reading of the budget by title.
And who would please move resolution 2017, 4.12, to read the budget by title?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted?
No, I have to read it.
Yep.
Whereas NJSA 48,4-8, as amended, provides that the budget shall be read in full at the public hearing, and that it may be read by its title only if, at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, complete copy of the approved budget and it shall be made available for public inspection in the free public library of the municipality and the three county libraries or regional libraries located in the municipality, or if no county libraries or regional libraries are located in the municipality, the county or regional library of the county in which the municipality is located, and the public office or delegated responsible for delivering copies of the approved budget to such libraries shall forward to the governing body in anticipation that each such delivery would be made. N, B is made available to each person requesting the same during said week and during the public hearing, where therefore being resolved by the mayor and council of the borough. One of the residents hereby declared the conditions of NJSA 48,4-8, as amended, except for the subject of one A and one B, have been met, and therefore the question for 2017 shall be read by title.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please? Okay, so before I open this hearing to the public, I just want to outline our procedures. Each person desiring to be heard will approach the microphone, state their name and address for the record. We'll recognize one person at a time, and obviously address all questions to the chair. We have our auditor and our treasurer here and the budget committee and all council members to assist in answering any questions. It is important to remind you that this is about the municipal budget only. Any questions pertaining to school or county matters are not subject for this hearing and cannot be discussed or answered here this evening. So, with that said, I'd ask now for a motion to open the public hearing on our 2017 municipal budget. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to our municipal budget, please come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Linda Huntley, 86 Van Dam Avenue. First comment that I want to make is that, I believe at the last meeting, John, you had stated that the, even though we had a bond ordinance for $1,005, you said that we were paying off as much as we were taking out, which is not true, because all we're paying off this year is $759,000, so it's double of what we're taking out.
No, combining with what we're canceling at a very near future date, we will see a reduction in overall debt.
When are you canceling it?
Well, we have to cancel by the end of the year, but I would hope in our May or June meeting?
Thursday, Dr. Hudson.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give you the words of Dr. Hudson.
That was approximately $1.7 million, including the utility on that total debt, so...
That's utility, that's not municipal?
Including the utility. The breakdown was, again, I wasn't speaking to capital, so let me just see if I have my notes with me. Blah, 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 blah. Wait, what was I saying? We're paying $898 in principal. Yeah, I don't have my, I don't have my capital folder with me, but the total was $1.4 million, including the utility. I want to say approximately it was $700,000 or $800,000 in municipal and about $900,000 in utility. Don't hold me to that. But overall, at the end of the day, there's going to be close to half a million dollar reduction, so...
John, I have your exact notes here, if you want.
Yeah, but is that from a March 17 email?
March 20.
What's the number on, because that changed after we financed the full spreadsheet on canceling?
Got it.
So, what was the...
That's from municipal, right?
Correct.
Canceling $905,000 in old debt.
Okay.
Paying off $898.
Right, paying off $898, paying off $9...
$905 of municipal debt?
Excuse me?
$905,000 of municipal debt?
I believe that was the number.
$709.
Yeah, we have the list of ordinances. Actually, I can, I can just go get my notes, it'll make life a lot easier. Do you want to ask another question? I'll come back to that.
Sure. The other question really is, is an observation. You've said time and time again that the problem with Bloomingdale is that we don't have a revenue, that we have a revenue issue. Well, as I've said previously and numerous times, I don't think that's the issue. I think the problem here is that even, no matter how much revenue we have, you use it, you spend it. You spend it as quick as it comes in, and it's detrimental to the town. I mean, now, I'm sure you've almost already have spent the money that you anticipate getting from Tealcon, which is a different matter, but just, it just is really not good for the town. That's my observation and my concern.
So, your suggestion is increase taxes, then?
That's not what I said, John. My suggestion is that you, maybe you look a little bit more at what you're spending. You spend money going hand over fist.
Okay, I respectfully disagree, but...
Well, you always would disagree, but that's, facts are facts.
As would you.
I'll make some rest of the year's, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the budget? Seeing no one, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Sumit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd ask my budget chair committee to move and second adoption of resolution 2017, 4.13, the adoption of our municipal 2017 budget. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Seconded. And discussion, just real quickly, I'll get, I'll get the capital debt reduction numbers in a moment, but as stated, the overall budget, well, the most important thing is there is a zero municipal tax increase this year, largely due to new revenue. The like, Tealcon license fee, new revenue, which increased our license fee from $15,000 to $400,000, was the primary reason this budget was able to come in flat. Now, if we look at the overall budget, which is $260,000 over last year's budget, but our overall expenses are roughly $300,000 increased, with salary and wages, pension, social security, health insurance is up $70,000, debt repayments up $30,000. So, overall, the budget, just sitting down, day one, the budget's up over $300,000, the overall's up $260,000, and the new revenue has allowed us to come in flat. So, I'm very proud of this budget. I know our residents will be pleased with this budget, and we're doing all these things. We are, we are reducing our debt, making capital improvements, and, you know, I think it speaks for itself. Does any other council member have a comment before we adopt?
Yeah, just very proud of this budget as well. Our auditor, our treasurer, CFO, you know, they worked really hard as well, including yourself. So, you guys did a great job, all the council members. And I got to say, you know, there is one resident that can't handle what we do. This is a zero. You can't get much better than this. So, if you're not happy with this, I don't know what you're ever going to be happy with. Zero tax increase is the best the council can do, and our only job here is to approve the taxes we collect to run this town, for the betterment of the town, of the municipality. So, if to say, all you do is spend, that is the only function that we do. Yes, we collect taxes and we spend it on the residents. That's our function here.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. This is in the middle of adoption?
Why was I personally attacked?
No, no, you have late public comment to address any, you have late public comment to address any other issues.
Why can't you personally attack by a council member? Is that okay?
We are in the middle of...
Why is the council is this?
We are in the middle of adopting a resolution to adopt our budget. If you wish, if you wish to speak, you'll have the opportunity on late public comment.
Why is my person attacked?
Any other comments from the governing body?
Oh, I see, the council was allowed to personally attack residents. Very bad.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please.
And just kind of wrote a question, do I need to read this resolution according to the script? Should I just read the top here?
Yes, please.
I'm just going to read the top of the resolution. Be it resolved by the governing body of the Borough of Bloomingdale County, the stake for the budget here and for, there to be force, except for, is hereby adopted and shall constitute appropriation for purposes stated in some theory, except for this appropriation authorization amount of $7,659,710 municipal purposes, including $182,173 focus-based recreation for land and estate preservation, plus somebody, and $277,307 minimum library tax.
That's good. Thank you so much. And again, if I may ask for a roll call.
Sure. Council members Dela Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes.
Sandemar.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes. Before I ask for a five-minute recess, so some of our professionals can exit, I also want to thank Sherri, our treasurer, for, you know, helping and preparing our budget, and Andy Pascal, our auditor, and Joe Facon, our auditor, for your guidance. It's invaluable, and we thank you for, Andy, for all you do for our borough, so it's very much appreciated. And thank you to the committee for your input and guidance as well. And I'd ask now for a motion for a five-minute recess, so Sherri and Andy can pack their belongings, and then we'll resume with the remaining of the meeting. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will resume at 7:37 PM. I thank you, everyone. Moving along to new business, the first item, I need a resolution 17, 4.4, payment of the bills. Who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? 14. Roll call, please.
Council members Hudson, yes. Sandemar.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
Costas.
Yes.
DeLawipra.
Yes. Next item, we're introducing bond ordinance number 13, 2017, which will be for an extension of a sewer system to property located on Van Dam Ave. And who makes that motion, please?
Second.
As you recall, last meeting, we declared this an emergency to expedite the process. Our attorneys will be preparing the final mortgages and documents to protect the borough's interest. We do anticipate the authorization this evening is in the amount of $100,000, although we anticipate the cost to be in the $55,000 to $60,000 range, which would be a 10-year assessment for this homeowner, which is saving their home, because they would not be able to put in a septic, so we're helping them maintain the value and integrity of their home by doing this bond ordinance to help them fund it and then repay back the borough. There, we will have second and final reading. Jane, we'll do May 16, or May 2, if we can, it's kind of tight.
I'm just trying to see where she says, bond ordinance may be considered for final passage 10 days after the date of introduction and seven after publication.
Okay, so we could do the second, if we can get this in the paper.
By Friday?
If you get in by Friday, that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9.
Don't count it? Yes, okay.
That's 10 days from Friday. You only need seven, if we're not retired.
Seven, perfect.
So, we'll do second and final reading on May 2, so we can expedite that again, like I stated. Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilor of Sandemar?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Costas?
Yes.
DeLawipra?
Yes.
Hudson, yes. And that would be, I have to read it.
Yes, please.
Bond ordinance providing for the extension of a sewer system to property located on Van Dam Avenue and by the Borough of Bloomingdale County, the county of the state of New Jersey, appropriating $100,000 therefore, and authorizing issuance of $100,000 bonds or notes of the borough to finance the costs thereof, and directing the special assessment of the costs thereof.
Thank you. Moving along, I need a motion for resolution 2017, 4.15. This is renewing our interlocal agreement with the Borough of Ringwood for Snake Den Road services. Who makes that motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Again, this is just a renewal to carry us through 2019. It is at an annual cost of $35,179 that we pay Ringwood to provide services for police protection, fire service, ambulance service, garbage and recycling, and snow removal of Snake Den Road. Any further comment? Roll call, please.
Councilor of Yasi?
Yes.
Costas?
Yes.
DeLawipra?
Yes.
Hudson, yes. Sandemar.
Yes.[1637.16]
Ms. Eklund, Ray, you're just, there's no excuse for you, so I'll just leave it like that.
Chair, please.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, could I just have a clarification? The last ordinance, you said, did I keep it file?
May 16th.
Did you say June 16th?
I'm sorry, June.
20th?
I'm sorry. No, I figure we give all of May for the planning boards, I'm not sure of their schedule.
I'm just trying to see what...
There's no, well, because of the primary, right? Isn't it, aren't our meetings the 13th and 27th that month? Is it what I, I was looking, I was looking at May. So, second and final would be, to be real safe, um, June 16th?
Okay. I'm not sure, okay.
Just got to get that to Barbara in the morning to get it on an agenda sometime in May. And being that the ordinance review recommendation, that should go pretty quickly under the planning board. Okay, any other member of the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, motion to close public comment?
Sumot.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, we do have one matter late executive, uh, for, actually, two added, personnel and one potential litigation. Any consideration of exec session business, the public will be given opportunity to speak. Schedule May 2nd, and May 16th. Voter registration deadline for the primaries, May 16th. Clerk's office will be open until 9:00 PM. I will want to state, uh, if you haven't had a chance, it was on the bills list tonight, we had a grant from 2009 that we finally closed out, which was the installation of a dock, a fishing pier at Oakwood Lake. It was installed today, so if you get a chance, go on by. And Bernie thanked the open space committee, uh, on our behalf, uh, and I, and I know the open space committee, uh, was up here at opening day. Four free holders came, because they funded Little League's back, new backstop, so we thank you for your time and efforts in that, because Bernie's a member of that committee, and certainly make sure Bloomingdale is taken care of. So, um, so with that said, I need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are clear out, and we'll get into a...